Good evening, everyone. I am sitting in for Mayor Davis this evening. I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:00 P. M. And before we get started with our agenda, if you'll join me in the platitude of agents, please. Thank you very much. And Claire, could we do a roll call for attendance, please?
Yes. Anderson.
Present.
Becerra.
Present.
Campbell.
Here.
Pearlino.
Present.
Palmer is out. Jones is also out. Jordan.
Present.
Nelson.
Present.
Nugent.
Present.
Savage. Absent. Cheryl.
Present.
And Vaseka.
Present.
All right, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, we do have a quorum tonight. And we also have minutes to approve from May 12th. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, those will be approved as submitted. Next on our agenda is committee schedule for May 21st. And are there any changes to the posted schedule for committees? Claire?
No changes, but I do want to note that we have some built in tech breaks to do some upgrades to city owned equipment and devices for council members on Wednesday. So please bring your devices.
Great, thank you for that reminder. And our meetings on Wednesday are from 9:00 A. M. starting with budget and finance. And we will be done with committees by 4:05 P. M. With Public Safety, Health and Operations Committee. And the agenda for all those meetings is posted on our website. If anyone needs to know what time to join us. And next on our agenda is announce, oh, sorry. Special presentations and proclamations, and we don't have any proclamations today. But we do have one neighborhood council update, and that's from the North Side, West Side Leadership Team Report. So come on up. Oh, hold on just one second.
There you go. Fun that you get to look at a giant yourself. I'm Gabe Sather Olson. I live at 1030 Phillips and I live on the west side. And I am here tonight for our joint North Side, West Side Committee Update. We have shifted to having two sort of big annual community meetings. So we just had our spring one. We invited lots of folks. Our city council people came, Parks came, Transportation came. And we had neighbors able to just have really deep dive conversations around all this stuff happening in the neighborhood. So that was positive. And then we'll have our elections and a barbecue in the fall. We just wanted to say that we're really excited about the start of construction at the roundabout at Scott and Phillips. People are really looking forward to safer streets, especially by our elementary school. And we are hopeful about the prospect of maintaining some kind of bike walk access over the bridge during that process for neighborhood kids to still get to the park over the summer. We also want to say that the plans for the North Side Park are incredible. And we really appreciate the job that Parks did with engagement around that process. We also wanted to voice our thanks for the mayor and council sort of pausing on Rivera to acknowledge the importance of childcare. Regardless of the outcome of that, we appreciate being heard and recognize that that's been a long time concern for neighbors. And finally, we do just want to say that we see that there's a lot of investment in the north and west side right now between the pedestrian bridge being repaired, Scott and Phillips Traffic and Parks. So we just appreciate that. We're really, really happy with all the investment in our neighborhood right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members? I don't see any in any online. I just want to say thank you so much for all your time participating in the neighborhood leadership team and everything that you guys do. It's always great to attend the meetings. Thank you. All right. Next on our agenda is public hearings, and we don't have any public hearings this evening. And item six on our agenda is new business, and we don't have any of those either. We have our consent agenda and items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees to be placed on the consent agenda to save time at council meetings. By voting on them as a package, the city clerk will read the list aloud. So citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. And we will invite public comment right after those items are read. So with that, we'll take public comment right after the items are read, sir. Thank you. Go ahead, Claire.
All right, on this evening's consent agenda, we begin with a motion to approve accounts payable for checks dated May 20th, 2025 in the amount of $2,392,720.04. We have a fourth quarter budget amendment, which is a motion to set a public hearing for June 2nd to consider the resolution for the fourth quarter fiscal year 2024 amendments to the annual appropriations. We have a motion to set a public hearing for June 23rd to consider adopting with or without edits the 2025 Parks Recreation Open Space and Trails Comprehensive Master Plan as an issue plan for the Our Missoula 2045 Land Use Plan and as the guiding document for the Parks and Recreation Department for the next 15 years. We have a motion to set a public hearing for June 9th, 2025 on a resolution of the Missoula City Council to create special improvement lighting districts number 53, currently known as Heron's Landing, Phase W1, SLD 40, 54, currently known as McNett Flats, SLD 55, currently known as Helgate Village, and described in Exhibit A District Boundary. The intent of the resolution of the Missoula City Council levy and assessing a special assessment and tax on the lots, pieces and parcels of land situated within the district boundary of the city of Missoula over a 15 year period to defray the design, construction and installation of street lighting in the street lighting districts 53, 54 and 55. We have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Design Holdings LLC contract for the Design Holdings LLC at 325 Southwest Higgins, which is a city MDT maintenance agreement. We have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the Copper Mountain Coffee at Stevens Avenue City MDT Maintenance Agreement. We have a motion to award the bid for the Orange Street and Craig Lane Traffic Signal Project to JAG Construction for the sum of $477,182 and authorize the return of bid bonds. We have a motion to approve an amendment for construction engineering and inspection services within Sandbell's current professional services agreement for the Orange Street and Craig Lane Traffic Signal Project at a cost not to exceed $85,005. We have a motion to award the bid for the industrial road to Momont One Lift Station Sewer Improvement Project to Prospect Construction LLC at a cost not to exceed $1,080,49 and authorize the return of bid bonds. We have a motion to award the bid for North First Street Water Main Replacement Projects to Three Rivers Land Works at a cost not to exceed $826,066.38 and authorize the return of bid bonds. We have a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the contract amendment to the professional services agreement with DJNA for tasks related to the preliminary engineering services at a cost not to exceed $1,155,153. And that is related to the downtown safety access and mobility work. We have a motion to approve the resolution setting forth Missoula Parking Commission's existing jurisdiction. And we have a motion to set a public hearing on June 2nd, 2025 to approve an ordinance amending Section 10 dot 54 dot 140 or penalties relating to parking violations and Section 10 dot 22 dot 260 limitations on parking in a residential area permit only area.
Thank you so much, Claire. Are there any, do any council members wish to separate any items on the agenda? All right. And with that, we can take public comments. So please come on up to the mic and state your name. And you have three minutes for public comments. Go ahead.
My friend is afraid to speak, but we need to keep that shelter open, okay? Johnson Street Shelter, we need to keep that shelter open.
Right, sir. I understand.
With all the jargon, I've been watching you, 800 and some thousand, 2 million, this, 3 million. You know, it takes this much to keep that freaking shelter open, okay? The alternative, do you want to be people that like close down a whole shelter? Is that the kind of people, is that the kind of town you are? I mean, we're your people, we're the messed up ones of your people. We're the messed up ones of your people, okay? We just need a little bit of help, okay? A place to freaking sleep. Okay, I've got schizophrenia.
Ma'am Chair, point of order, we.
Yes, sir. I understand your.
I'm sorry, pardon my, pardon my friends, I'm sorry.
I understand your concern and I'm happy to take a public comment, but right now.
We need to keep that shelter open.
Right now, we're taking public comment on items on the consent agenda only. Thank you. Any other public comment on items on the consent agenda? And if you could give us your name for the record, please.
Scott Sproul. I've lived in the city of Missoula since 1972. And I owned a retail store downtown called Hayden Soul for 50 years, which I sold to our oldest son last year. So I'm officially retired. Also bought my wife's parents' house up the rattlesnake. So I've moved from over by food farm, that district to the, I don't know if that's upper rattlesnake or mid rattlesnake. I, I see a lower and an upper. I don't see a mid, but anyhow, I'll have to learn which are your representatives, my representative. I'm here to talk about something that's going to be brought up this afternoon, this evening, about increase in parking meter fines. And maybe surprisingly, I'm here as a past retailer of 50 years to say that I agree with these parking fines. But what I would like the city council to do is delay the implementation of these newer tiered fines until the first of the year, until January 1st, 2026. The fines have been zero. The first fine is no cost. That's something that I worked with the city council in 2014. 11 to 0, agreed that the first fine should be zero because most people don't get parking tickets.
Sir, if I may, that's not an item on the consent agenda right now, but it's something that we will have on in front of us in just a couple of minutes. So could I get you to?
Want me to come back?
Give me more detail when we actually touch on that item? Is that okay?
Just call.
Ma'am Chair.
Yes.
Point of order, 8.13.
It is on the consent, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I'll continue. So at a recent parking commission meeting, Linda McCarthy mentioned how that first ticket being free has been a real bonus for downtown Missoula. A lot of tourists have come in and said they just can't believe they, they got a ticket downtown and didn't have to pay anything. So it's been a real goodwill gesture. You got to realize, and you probably do realize, most parking tickets, most people in Missoula do not get parking tickets. And those who do get parking tickets, Jody will tell you that between 60 and 80% between 60 and 80% get one parking ticket a year. So the fines are not really addressing the common shopper, I guess. I'm coming from retail point of view. Most of the fines, most of the parking tickets are received by owners, managers and employees. And I don't like saying that, but there's about 24 people that get more than one parking ticket a month. But there are over 8,600 that just get a lot less than that. So we're partially, and I'm partially in favor of this because last year I wrote the city council member saying I was opposed to the $20 parking ticket, the fifth ticket going to $160. I don't know if you remember that, but that was what the recommendation of the consultants was. And instead of a doubling of the fines, it was a 700% increase. Jody has worked with the community and come to what I think is a much more reasonable fine structure. So the $5 goes to 10, the 10 goes to 20, the 15, 30 and the 20, 40. And again, I don't think most of our customers downtown are going to get $40 fines. So supporting the fines and the changes, but would like to delay it until the first of next year. And I think you can ask Jody, I think in the past that's happened, what I remember that's happened before, that some of these changes are usually delayed till the start of the year.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. All right, any other comment on our consent agenda this evening? All right, seeing none. Online. I don't see any hands up for comments on our consent agenda. So with that, if we could please, sir, is this? No, thank you. Claire, if we could, if we could, please, sir. If we could do a roll call vote on the consent agenda, please, sir.
Sure, voting on the consent agenda, Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes.
Campbell. Pearlino.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
And Savage, or I'm sorry, and Vaseka.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you. And we can now move to our next item on our agenda, that's regular business. Items listed under committee reports were not approved unanimously in city council committees. The chairperson of that standing city council committee will make a motion and we invite community comment on each one of those items. So the first one we have before us is item 9.1 A B. And that's Tourism Business Improvement District Hotel Room Nightly Fee Increase and Update. And Claire, I have you as the sponsor of that, but maybe we can get maybe Mr. Nugent or to make that motion on the TBID.
I move city council approve the resolution to increase the nightly hotel fee to $4 per night, starting July 1st, 2025.
Thank you. And the dissenting vote or votes on this item, would you like to speak to this item right now? Sandra, go ahead.
Thanks, yeah, I'll just be quick. I voted against this just because I see, I think that this is not only going to increase just for out of state, yes, increase prices for out of state folks to come in. A lot of in-state folks and family and residents do use these hotels. And I think it's just making Missoula, I guess, overly priced. So I understand that it will pass tonight. I just, I don't want to, I personally don't want to support it. So I'm not going to be in favor, thank you.
Sure thing. Are there any other comments from council members? Mr. Nugent.
Thank you. I will be in support of this. I think that it's very rare when there's any ability to collect revenue that isn't straight from taxpayers. And I think that this is one of the rare instances in state law that allows for this sort of thing to be created specifically to allow our tourism board to collect a fee from tourists staying in hotels that then supports certain functions related to tourism. You know, we had a great committee hearing. I, I think we talked a lot about things like the airport flight guarantee, which that in and of itself is a great thing. Also, a lot of the events that this board helps attract into town and support through this. Nothing in the history that I'm aware of is showing the Tourism Business Improvement District and that board to be anything but good stewards of this public money. And so I'm, I'm happy to be in support of this.
Thank you. Anyone else on council? Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I concur with everything my colleague, Mr. Nugent, just said, but I could just personally attest. You know, I have attended TBID and Destination Missoula meetings for over a year now as council representative on those committees. They are good stewards of the money that's being used. I mean, they have very detailed financial reports and they're very thoughtful, very thorough in their vetting of how they use their monies for various things, be it support of events coming into town, trying to recruit different events coming into town. I gave mention to, you know, Class A basketball chairman's going to be coming up here next year and other ways that Mr. Nugent alluded to that they're supportive of. And first and foremost, I, I think it's a very modest increase from $2 to $4. I think the extra $2 is far outweighed by the benefit it has in terms of total dollars of revenue that are bound by tourism to Missoula area over here. I think the figure was somewhere around 450 million, if I read that right. 489. Yeah, so I mean, huge amount of money that generates, you know, stimulates the economy here locally, supports jobs, supports jobs in tourism, supports our businesses, supports restaurants. So I, I think it's an extremely good value and bang for the buck. So I'll be in support.
All right. Any additional council comments or questions? Mine. Seeing none, we will take some public comment on this item. Any public comment on this item? Come on up.
Hi, my name's Deanne Monahan. I'm the president of the TBID Board here. And I just want to voice my support as a board member and the president of TBID and as the general manager of the DoubleTree Hotel. This was something that we did a lot of research on before making this recommendation as a board. We ended up getting unanimous approval on our seven member board for this increase. The last increase was in 2013. And all of our costs that we, that we use these dollars for have increased, whether that's in grant funding locally, the cost that, that we're giving these dollars to groups to do their events here and are just ad purchases, anything else that we decide to, to use the money for. I think, I appreciate the comments too about the committee being good stewards of the money. I think we have an excellent staff and team there that go through the vetting process on how we use these dollars. And I think it was something that we spent a lot of time and energy deciding how we were going to and if we were going to make this move. Lots of input from the local tourism community on it. We held several public sessions for comments and and then it was unanimous vote by our board. So I'd encourage you to support it and thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right, if there are no additional public comments, take a quick look online. We could do a roll call vote, Claire, please.
All right, voting on the item 9.1 A B Tourism Business Improvement District Hotel Nightly Fee Increase, beginning with Becerra.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Pearlino.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Vaseka.
No.
And Anderson.
Yes.
And that's eight in favor, one opposed.
All right. Thank you and thank you Destination Missoula and TBID for bringing this forward. All right. Our next item of regular business is item 9.1 point D, point B. That's On Our Way Home, Missoula Community Houselessness Strategy Adoption. And I believe Mr. Nugent, you're making that motion?
Certainly. I move city council approve a resolution to adopt On Our Way Home Missoula Community Houseless Strategy.
All right. And I believe this item was put on the regular business agenda to clarify a few points and answer any outstanding questions or additional updates from staff. So Emily, is there any additional information to provide on this item?
No, staff doesn't have any additional information at this time.
All right. Any questions or comments from council members? Mr. Campbell.
Time for comments?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be in support of this tonight. I think I'm in support because it's a starting framework. Obviously, devil's going to be in the details, how it moves forward and the particulars of the different programs and how they'll be funded. So there's still quite a bit of work to do. I think there's been some apprehension, if you will, on the details in terms of how the city is going to spend its limited resources on this program going forward. But, you know, that said, you know, I'm just, I'm glad we're able to turn the page on the original tenure plan to end homelessness, which, you know, as I've said before, I've said at the podium, I've said, and I testified on Zoom to this body is just been, you know, save a few programs. It's been a pre dismal failure and it's good to see that program buried and going forward. You know, hopefully we have a program that's more workable, that can be more effective, more cost effective. And yeah, I look forward to further conversations of this as the details on this plan unfold. But for tonight, I'll be in support, thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Any additional council comments? And quick online, and I don't see any. Happy to take public comment on this item. Is there any public comment?
Hi, my name's Sage Bennett, B E N N E T T. I have a lot of feelings about this. There's been a lot of times where you have all discussed various strategies for ending houselessness and the concepts or concepts of a plan that you have around it. Within this document, there was various data that was pretty concerning to me, such as the 1,484 people that have experienced houselessness just over the past year. In your point and count that was available there for a day, there was 644 people that were unhoused and 25% of those were without shelter. According to the data that you have, it says that we have 513 emergency shelter beds available. And that's including the Johnson Street Shelter, which has about 200 beds in a pinch for folks on days where it needs to be more crowded. Which is concerning since if we go on this one day's count, there's at least 131 people that are left in the cold without shelter over their heads and then are further penalized through the 12.60 ordinance that you have all enacted, Which is now providing criminal charges against folks for residing outside. This is really concerning since we're going to be losing 200 beds. Coming up here in a second. And it feels really frustrating to take away beds from community members. And then to provide fines of $50 to those folks, which the state has also just passed legislation. That is going to increase those fines to $500 a day for folks, which I don't know. What your financial situations are, but I cannot afford $500 a day for simply trying to find a place to sleep. So that's really horrifying to know and I really hope you do genuinely create a plan that will address this. Issue within our community. However, it worries me that the coalition that's being planned to be built through this document. Says, quote, "will include membership from decision makers from all sectors with an impact on houselessness." And be representative of the houseless population, which is really good, yet some, for some reason, we have representatives of the business community there and I worry how they will. Be representative or have any impact on the houseless community and why they are involved in this project.
Thank you for your comments and come on up.
BK Montana. Well, let's change the topic from ending homelessness to how well can we lessen the impact and so forth. And as far as that certificate of documentation of $500. You can just stick it far as I'm concerned. Just stick it where it belongs or better yet, let's have a poster board. Out here in the hallway of all these certificates that I've been camping outside. It's a joke. Just manage people appropriately and put them in appropriate realizing. And as you can see, I've got advertisement displayed really well from one of your homeless people that threatened me.
Thanks for your comment, BK, and I hope you feel better soon or you'll recover soon. Any additional public comment on this? Seeing none. See a couple more hands up, Mr. Nugent.
Thank you. The topic around the $500 fine, which is HB 642, has come up a public comment a couple of times. And then I get emails about it saying that I'm wrong, but I checked with the city attorney. Actually, I checked with both our city attorneys. And I think it's important people to know the state legislature passed HB 642 and created this $500 fine. It does not obligate cities to follow it and there are plenty of examples where there is something in state statute, but then. Missoula is a charter city, has our own ordinance and our police department follows our own ordinance. So there is nothing. In that bill that the state legislature that passed that requires the city of Missoula to start fining people $500 a day. There is nothing, there's no indication from anybody within the city of Missoula that is something that is occurring. And I think that I would speak for all of us that if that is a ticket that is written, we would want to know about it. I think I've given you a couple of examples, but one example is there's there in the state law, there's set rules for speeding, but then there's also Missoula City Ordinance and. Police officers generally write under the Missoula City Ordinance, not the state law. And that's just one of many examples. So I think it's important people to know that that is not something that is going to be happening in Missoula. Nor is it required to be happening in Missoula based on that law being passed at the state level. I agree with everyone's comment that that would be a bad idea and like I said, if that is something that anybody hears of a ticket being written in Missoula for, I think everybody on council would want to hear about it.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent, for providing that clarification. Daniel, go ahead.
Well, I'm glad that the city isn't fining people $500 a day for not having a place to go, but the city council did recently pass a fine of $50 a day. For that same situation of people that don't have access to shelter. And then on top of that, passed an ordinance to give people misdemeanor criminal charges. Which is just as bad, if not worse. So I think if we're having a change of heart on that issue, that would be very helpful. For human rights and for getting people out of homelessness faster. But overall, I think this plan is good. I think it's aspirational. But honestly, it's not going to be possible without government funding. I think we need to push as a council to help fund some of these things and fund the shelters that, shelter beds that this plan is calling for. And I'm just right now seeing this head in the wrong direction, not funding. Places for people to sleep and then putting more and more funding towards moving people in circles and trying to criminalize homelessness. So. I think this plan is great and I appreciate everybody who worked on it, but we need to get our funding priorities straight if we want to make this possible.
Thanks for your comments. Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. Yeah, I echo my colleague, Mr. Carlino's comments and just wanted to add that. I am largely in support of the aspirational aspects of this plan. I have significant concerns about the housing sprint and that there is no funding to ensure that people stay in their homes after. And if they are housed, so the city is going to spend approximately $400,000 to address the barriers of the folks at the. Johnson Street Shelter in accessing housing, but it is incumbent on the person housed to pay their own rent afterward. And I think that that's the problem is that. Folks don't have money to pay rent and that's why we have a really high unhoused population, just like a lot of other municipalities across the country. And so. I do think we need to throw funding at this because we're going to clog our criminal justice system up and that is also an expenditure that we pay for as taxpayers. Our tax dollars pay our police, our city attorneys, our prosecutors, our municipal judges and our public defenders. And we've still yet to put a price on how much 1260 is going to cost our taxpayers. So, yeah, I mean, it's a step in the right direction, but it is aspirational. There's no real funding behind it. So I put a caveat on my support for this, but I will be in support of it.
All right. Stacy.
Thanks so much, Madam Chair. Appreciate the comments from my council members and I just want to take a moment to thank staff for all the hard work. On this and really being intentional about trying to bring people into the process. It's not perfect. But we are trying to build a big table and get feedback from everybody. I do want to correct the record because I think it's important that. The city of Missoula isn't spending taxpayer dollars, the $400,000 on the housing sprint. It is actually being funded. Majority of it philanthropically and it's a fund that's being held at the United Way and we always are getting the two funds mixed up. So I'm going to. Ask for an assist from Mr. Nugent on the one that is funding the housing sprint. Is called.
The one that's called, it's the Housing Sprint Fund at the United Way, not to be confused with the Housing Solutions Fund, which is the regular fund that. The United Way and its partners operate regularly and our housing trust fund has given money to, which. Can help people already in housing, keep their housing in addition to these other things. So similar causes, but different funds.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Definitely the explanation. I mean, I think that that's an important point as. You know, people are paying attention to how we are allocating their fiscal, you know, their dollars and. We're heading into a budget season and we've all been talking about how the budgets are tight. So the $400,000 is going to the housing sprint. There's been, you know, we've gotten updates on how much money has been put towards that. But it's been privately raised and the city is allocating staff time to help coordinate and do a bunch of this work. So that's kind of our contribution to it. And I appreciate Mr. Nugent pointing out the fact that there are. Entities in this community that are focused on making sure people once housed stay in housing. And so I think important part of this plan is the comprehensive wraparound nature of it because there's, you know, people all along the spectrum need. A bit of assistance and it differs under various circumstances. So just wanted to make sure that folks didn't feel as though we were. Misappropriating their tax dollars by putting that money into the housing sprint fund. Thank you.
Thank you, and I also appreciate that clarification. Any additional? Comments? Okay, seeing none. And we already took public comment on this item. So let's go ahead and do a local vote, please. Claire.
Right. Voting this evening to approve a resolution to adopt On Our Way Home, the Missoula Community Houselessness Strategy. Beginning with Campbell.
Yes.
Carlino.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Bosika.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
And Becerra.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you and thank you to our staff for all your work and for, to everyone in the community who's participated to make this. Plan. To bring this plan forward. It's appreciated. All right, our last item. Let's see here. Last item is item nine point one point G, point B, that's bid award to Western Municipal Construction for the Garden City Compost Improvements Project. And I am the chair of that committee, so I'm going to ask Mr. Nugent if you could make that motion, please.
There were no LUP things tonight. I thought I was off the hook. I move city council award the bid for Garden City Compost Improvements Project to Western Municipal Construction at a cost not to exceed $8,579,779 in authorized return of bid bonds.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council on this item? Not seeing any hands up here. So we can take public comment on this item. Anyone wants to, who wants to provide public comment on this item, please come up. There's one public comment online. William. Leishman. If you can unmute and provide comment.
Hi.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I submitted my testimony by email. And I just want to make sure that that's already been entered into the record. By the city clerk, the mayor's office. Sent it over to her.
Yes, we attached it.
Great. I just had one more comment.
Go ahead.
Fast contamination is being swept under the rug by industry jargon nationwide. Now that the EPA is controlled by industrial polluters. Missoulians can't count on the protection of federal laws and my email correspondence with Montana's DEQ demonstrates this week. Their complete indifference to the dangers of fast forever chemicals in our community or indeed across Montana. But Missoulians expect more from our leaders. We expect transparency. We need to tell people in no uncertain terms when they pull up to Garden City Compost. What they're putting in their pickup truck. My testimony already covers the fact that I have talked to many retail establishments. Here, big ones, Pink Grizzly, Caris, none of them carry this product anymore. Garden City Harvest doesn't use it, thank God. So that won't endanger our Saturday market, but. I mean, obviously the word's gotten out with the people that know things. It's the people that don't know things with their pickup. Lining up to, you know, let their kids play in it. Bad enough that the city puts it in our schools, in our schoolyards and our city park. And our sidewalk parks. But what about these people that get no information? I know that. The. Engineer that testified on Wednesday says those are going to try to put together a brochure. How about a four foot by eight foot sign? At the gate of where people line up to get the stuff so they can find out more. We expect more from our leaders here in Missoula. People. People need to know what. What they're picking up. They need to know what the city's putting next to them. They need to know what the city's putting in our parks and in our schools. And. Like I said in the beginning. Fast contamination is being swept under the rug and by industry jargon.
Mr. Leishman. We're at three minutes of public comment.
Okay, well, do the right thing, please.
Thank you. All right, any additional comment, Mr. Nugent?
Thank you. You know, both this topic and the last one, I think we had great committee meetings about. So if anybody is following along, wants to go back and watch those, they were on our calendar last Wednesday and I think there was lots of great conversation. This issue particularly, the issue that's identified is separate from the issue that's in front of us to vote on. Specifically, there, my understanding of that committee meeting is there are standards around drinking water and Missoula's drinking water meets those standards. There are no standards. With which this type of product is held against, which is something that many people around the horseshoe indicated openness to learning more about. And, you know, investigating that in the future as we go forward. I think it's important to note that. The project we're voting on tonight is partially to put concrete. Underneath our composting to make sure that chemicals like these don't leach into our groundwater. And so I think that this is actually a very good thing to prevent that sort of contamination in the water system that we use regularly. So I want to make sure that we note the separate nature of those things and also just. Remind anyone who is watching now to go back and watch that committee meeting because we definitely had a thorough discussion on this and. We'll, we'll definitely keep this issue front and center in kind of our education going forward.
Thank you. Appreciate those comments. I also want to add that all areas of expertise related to this issue were part of the conversation while this was being. That this, this plan was being developed and also. You know, additional communication to the public about. The composition of the materials that we do sell in the community will be considered for providing to the public in the, in the future. So with that, I don't see any additional public comment. So we will take a vocal, if we could do a vocal vote, please, Claire.
Voting on item nine point one point D, point B, oh, sorry, nine point one G B. The bid award for Garden City Compost Improvements to Western Municipal Construction, beginning with Carlino.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Nugent.
Yes.
Cheryl.
Yes.
Bosika.
No.
Anderson.
Yes.
Becerra.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
That's eight in favor, one opposed.
All right. So that was our last item, that section of the agenda, and we can move to item 10 on our agenda. That's public comment on non-agenda items. So if you're here to provide comment on anything that was not part of our. ten on our agenda. That's public comment on non-agenda items. So if you're here to provide comment on anything that was not part of our agenda, please come on up and state your name for the record. We've got three minutes.
Hello, my name is Jamie Davis. And I'm meeting here with you today as a guardian and sister of Jeffrey Paul Davis. This is a picture of Jeffrey, just so you could see who I'm talking about. Put a face to the name. My brother has a complex diagnosis of autism, schizophrenia, and OCD since the age of 12 years old. Jeffrey is disabled and has delayed verbal skills and notes at most times nonverbal. My mother and father have cared for Jeff most of his life with brief intermission with Winds of Change years ago. Jeffrey has returned to Winds of Change in Missoula and currently resides at a group home here, as my parents' own disabilities make it impossible to care for Jeffrey's needs. In the past three weeks since moving here, Jeffrey has had trouble, troubling changes in his behavior. With his current issues that he is facing, he will need more care than what the staff and people at Winds of Change can provide, more than what my parents were able to provide in the past as well. We attempted to get Jeff hospitalized yesterday and were unable to because he verbally did not indicate that he wanted to harm himself or others. We attempted to get the mobile crisis team and police involved. Jeffrey was denied immediate hospitalization for his mental health deterioration because Jeffrey had not been caught in the act of harming himself or others. And since he has verbally made, not made those claims, he cannot be hospitalized. How can a nonverbal person tell someone what their intentions are with actions? For example, when my brother is ready to leave a restaurant, he will stand in front of the fire exit. As Jeffrey's guardian and as his family, I know him. As a guardian, it should be legally viable for me to make the decision for Jeffrey to be admitted into a hospital for his own health and safety. Jeffrey needs a direct support professional to help him with his daily care and to accompany him on his walks, which he loves to do. You will certainly see him around our city walking around. My brother has high support needs, and the support that we have got from the state of Montana has been underwhelming, to say the least. I'm here to bring awareness to your city council about my brother's needs because he needs help. And I am certain that he isn't the only person in the state of Montana, nor in the city of Missoula, that needs help in the way that he does. I'm here advocating for my brother Jeffrey because he is unable to advocate for himself. Jeffrey urgently needs help and further evaluation of his case. The state of Montana needs better resources for Jeffrey and for people like him who don't have guardians or family speaking for him.
Thank you so much for your comments and for bringing this issue to our attention.
Thank you for hearing me out.
All right, anyone else?
Hi, my name's Sage Bennett, B E N N E T T. And I am once again standing in front of you talking about the Johnson Street Shelter and the way that we have criminalized the unhoused in our community. And there was some pushback about HB six forty-two, and while a city might decide to simply not make an enforcement over a certain law a priority, this does require a cohesive understanding from city police and city staff. I worry that the tone city council and the mayor have set provides much confusion around the enforcement of HB six forty-two. It seems that criminalizing the unhoused as this piece of legislation does is a priority of the city. This is clearly shown through the fifty-dollar fine and twelve point sixty ordinance. So who are we to assume that HB six four two won't be enforced? I appreciate that you have spoken with the city attorney about this. However, I worry that more perspectives from a legal capacity, especially with how our state has been enforcing a variety of legislation, might be required in this situation. I think that there is a lot of confusion and gaslighting that oftentimes occurs in our community from the members that are before me and city council and the mayor as a whole. A clear example of this is within the Missoula Community Houseless Strategy that was just brought forward, which states in the coalition that you plan to build that city staff will provide staffing support, including resources, data, and administrative support. Local government will support coalition priorities, one of which is the reduction of unsheltered people through policymaking and funding. This was a bit laughable to read as this has been a goal that has been previously stated by city council and the mayor, which has not only not been followed through upon, but there has been decisions made around policies and funding that have actively harmed the unhoused community and have certainly not made a priority of the reduction of unsheltered people. It's incredibly infuriating to be told over and over again the same platitudes while having no actions backing up the words that are said in front of us today, the words that have been told to your constituents and the lies that have been perpetuated. Because it's not even that you're not doing anything, it's that you're going against your word and the morals that you informed your constituents about by completely contradicting what you have told us you will do. And twelve point sixty is an ordinance that clearly criminalizes the unhoused, and it is clear that that is a priority of the city council, so I worry about how state legislation will be enacted within our city.
Thanks for your comments. Come on up.
Big K Montana, look at the treasure that one of your fine constituents will have a spinoff of March sixteenth on the same subject of the disease called chomanism. We embrace it here in Missoula and then embellish it or regard it really well at the China consulate to stick it to me when I requested the police to interview for the fact of the matter. And I would love to bring Betty, my putrid Sal, here. I'll save her for the emails. Well, Friday at the rail park, a trio got on the bus, walked on the bus, and it shouldn't have surprised me for what this specific individual sang the Pavarello anthem, but he used some better words. The Embracement as it was saying in front of the Gold Creek Men and Night Fellowship on April nineteenth. Let's get back to March sixteenth, when I was threatened technically by three individuals that get embraced, empowered, and advocated for. Well, if I go for the topic of moral support of the situation of our North Korean West, North Korean Russian Embassy at eleven ten Broadway, which is run by the equivalents of Vladimir Putin, that's embraced, empowered, and advocated by moral support. And that has yet to be released what the moral support is of this city and the constituency to the North Korean Russian Embassy. Doesn't that look beautiful for advertisement? That I take a wonderful selfie that I haven't released yet. Well, better yet, public safety documented really well. But this is not a public safety police matter. This is a federal vehicle that this has happened on, and the cameras are on, those buses are substantial. I want it all brought to public when the North Korean Russian Embassy wants to be morally supported. And what would that contain to? And I know the city council don't have enough moral support, but somebody does, and those are the ones I'm after.
Thanks for your comments, Big K. Next, come on up.
Hello, good evening. Carrie Schreiber from Ward Four in South Gate Triangle. Speaking with continuing concerns around the Bob Ward's South Gate Crossing purchase, the nine acres for a total of thirteen and a half acres that the city now owns and is in the process of choosing the developer. It seems relevant to me that the entity that's choosing the developer for this property was founded by one of the sellers and that the development plan that was used to solicit developers was a plan formed by the seller, not by the plan that was made with public input with Urban Land Institute back in two thousand and three. So we've been advocating in, in the neighborhood to keep access to our nature, our water, mature trees through a ditch that runs through this easement. Wow, I didn't know I was coordinated enough to point that out. But the only penciled in plans for the park that I'm hearing from MRA, from MEP, who is the nonprofit that is choosing the developer, selecting the developer, from the Parks Department, is a vertical, sorry, let's see, vertical along the tracks, sort of a park that wouldn't engage the waterway or the trees, and especially this area that people have been using to gather and to access nature. I have spent hundreds of hours talking with neighbors, both residential and business, talking with park users. I know it's not an official park, but there's people back there all the time. I'm walking all the time. And I've brought the receipts from your own work, like from the post study that show this type of nature is essential for health, especially in our constrained area between Brooks and Reserve Streets. So I'm just at a point of frustration and wanting, like, make it make sense. Because what we see logically in the neighborhood is backed up by the studies and we know that MRA and Downtown Association have put a lot of resources in into making our downtown river access parks wonderful. And we have a Midtown Association and the MRA involved with Midtown through this urban renewal district, and we'd like to see something you know, can't be comparable to the river, but we could have a nice little walk along the creek. And it seems like glad handing this with the seller seeming to have control over the development plans and the choosing of the developer. And I'm just hoping at minimum there's some clear and binding language with the contract of the developer for a park and for public process.
Thanks for your comments. Any additional public comment? Seen none in chambers. Quick look online, it doesn't look like we have any. There's some missing someone. All right. So with that, we can move to item ten on our agenda. That's, nope, number eleven, communications from the mayor, and I don't have any communications from the mayor's office. So we will move to item twelve. That's general comments of the city council members, and we'll start with you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair, I'll pass to me.
All right. And Ms. Jordan.
Thank you. I'll pass.
Mr. Carlino.
Pass.
All right, Ms. Anderson.
Thanks so much. I just wanted a couple of comments addressed to some of the issues that folks brought up. Thank you for coming and sharing a story about your brother. And it is heartbreaking situation that I can't imagine. And it is, you point out a really good, or you point out a huge flaw in our system, that the state level, the cuts that they have made have serious ramifications on people's lives day to day. And unfortunately, you are experiencing that firsthand. And at, you know, we hear about it all the time, and it's incredibly frustrating because we are trying to do what we can with limited resources, but we don't continue to have a good partner at the state level. You know, we haven't been able to restore the cuts that were made in twenty seventeen to Health and Human Services. There's been some additions, but then if you think about all of the inflationary costs and things like that, even if we were back at the two thousand seventeen levels, we would still be behind where we need to be. And mental health services, as we have heard from the mobile support team, and most every one of us around this table have no people who've had these crises, it affects everybody. And it is, I think, a something that we as a government, especially at the federal and state level, are not adequately addressing, and we are letting people down. And it's incredibly frustrating, and you sort of, you put a face and a family to that today. And I thank you for coming up and sharing that with us. And, and it, you know, I can only imagine the frustration, you know, can't unfortunately tell the hospital what to do and, and what legal rights you have as a guardian, but I just wanted to acknowledge that you came and shared your story, and I appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to point out is that the regards to the Bob Ward property, because it's just, you know, I've gotten a couple of emails from constituents of that in my ward of butts right next to it. I think it's really important to point out that this was a private piece of property that through goodwill and hard work, the city was able to purchase, so therefore we are going to be able to engage in a robust community planning process. Had XYZ developer bought that property, they would have rights to do all sorts of things. And there would, they could engage the community if they wanted to. They didn't, are not required to engage the community. So I appreciate the, the care and effort that the neighbors have, but I think that there's a lot of misinformation about what is happening and what the opportunities are. It is, it is a huge opportunity to put some really intentional development in Midtown, and it is lacking. And we at the city have demonstrated time and time again our commitment to parks, open space, and understanding that that is a pivotal quality of life for our citizens. And so I can't imagine that the city of Missoula is going to, you know, take our property that we own and helped develop and not have a robust planning process, especially around parks. And I know from Mr. Nugent's comments and his response to my constituents, which thank you for doing that, that we are at the very beginning conceptual stages. So there is nothing set in stone. The community engagement process hasn't started, and so I just want folks to know where we're at and what a great opportunity it is before us to really engage in this. And that wasn't necessarily legally required if it was a private developer. So I think there's opportunities and I celebrate that. So those are my comments for this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, and Mr. Nugent.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I would just add that I appreciate the, the regular comments on this topic, and I appreciate that the neighborhood is paying attention to it. So for those who aren't paying as close attention as Ms. Schreiber, I'll just share a little bit more information about the process. We have talked about it at these public meetings before, but the city is committed to a park being in that area. MEP, the MRA has asked MEP to help identify interested and qualified developers, but part of that wasn't asked to include parks and gathering spaces in their vision for the site. So anything that comes to us is going to have that as a criteria, and the city will be committed to a public process around that and master planning. So just continuing to say that out loud on the record is important, and I want to make sure people are aware of that. And, and as Ms. Anderson alluded to, the reason that the city asked the MRA board to approve the acquisition was so the city could help be part of that planning process and assure that a park was there. Because while it has been private property, we recognize that the neighborhood has been using it in lots of different ways because it's just been open for years and years. And you know, having access to space in that area, I think is important. So committed to the public process there. I also want to make sure, you know, I mentioned it already, we had a great community meeting around the new, the new plan in, let's forget what that committee is called, Housing Housing Redevelopment Community Programs, you know, on the new plan, On Our Way Home, Missoula Community Houseless Strategy. And like I said, I would just encourage people to go back and, and watch that if they would like to kind of hear more of the community approach to that. And in some ways, the city is expected to be more of a facilitator. But there are a lot of good points that brought up, several people around the this horseshoe have brought them up as well. I do want to make sure that the public is aware that I do want to make sure that the public is aware that the city has committed to supporting many things that help and support our unhoused community and will continue to do so. The hot team, the coordinated entry system, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the city helped set up the Blue Heron, we're leading the housing sprint, we created the mobile support team, and then we made sure that was included in the fire levy that the taxpayers voted to support, we put staff time into that as well, so, you know, the city is not doing nothing. It's a complicated conversation, and I recognize that there are a lot of different opinions and concerns around that, but I think it's important for that to be out there on the record. Lastly, I always like to talk about things the city's invested in that I happen to see when I'm out in the community. My son was in a baseball tournament this weekend at Playfair Park, and it was really great on Sunday because every single baseball field in that park was being used, and then if you looked beyond the baseball fields, the volleyball courts were all being used, the sand volleyball courts, including the new addition that was used, that one of the Parks Grants was used to extend last year, and then beyond that, there was youth soccer, which had to move to Playfair last weekend because the rugby tournament was taking all of the fort, and we probably don't want youth soccer and the rugby tournament at the same place at the same time, from what I've heard. And then there was also state AA, I think, divisional tennis going on. So every piece of that park was active, and when I say every piece, they filled the pool with water two weeks ago, and there was somebody practicing in there this weekend, which had to have been freezing. But I just think that when we talk about things that the community has invested in, it was great to see every square inch of that public investment that has been there for years and years and years being used, and I just want to say I appreciate it to everybody in the community, both city staff and community volunteers who helped put all of those events on.
Thanks, for sure. It was a busy weekend for all the facilities within the Parks and Wags Department. Let's go online to our council members who are joining virtually, Ms. Cheryl?
I'll pass tonight, thank you, I appreciate my colleagues' comments.
All right, and Ms. Vasika?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind folks that Memorial Day is this coming weekend, so we don't have council on that Monday, and while y'all are enjoying barbecues, putting docks in at the lake, enjoying an extra day with your family, please remember that Memorial Day is a time to honor and remember the brave men and women who gave their lives for our country, and I believe that their sacrifice has given us the freedom that we enjoy today. So I would encourage everyone to take a moment to reflect, to remember their courage and our dedication, and really appreciate the piece that they fought really hard to protect and gave the ultimate sacrifice for. It is a little bit earlier this year, so I just wanted to remind folks about that, and please be safe out there, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vasika. I knew that if I forgot that you were gonna remember to mention that for us, so thank you. All right, that was our last item of business on the agenda, so I want to thank my colleagues for all you do and for all of you joining us here today, it's appreciated. So with that, we'll adjourn this meeting at 7:13.